Call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council, please call it all.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
Here, thank you. This time, I have a pledge of allegiance. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. The church tonight will be given by Reverend Daniel Rowe of the Jamestown Christian Missionary Alliance Church.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you and praise you that we have this opportunity to have another city council meeting. And we just thank you that as a town, we were able to meet and do business. And we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this country. And we just ask that your blessing would be upon this meeting. Everything that needs to be discussed, the resolutions and everything. And we just thank you that the town can work together with the police, fire department, and all the many different agencies that work well together in this wonderful city of Jamestown. So we ask for your blessing on this meeting, and Jesus made me pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Rowe. About approval of the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five voting session? So move the conference room. Do we have any messages from the mayor?
We do. Councilmembers, the pursuant of the authority vested in me by the Charter of South City, I hereby nominate Reverend Mook Fedor, three-eleven Crosby Street, Jamestown, to be reappointed a member of the Jamestown Community College Board of Trustees in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire June thirtieth, twenty thirty-two. Jack A. Anderson, two-twenty Earring Street, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to sus-
No, we have-
Oh, sorry. One more.
And Heather Greenfield, three-eighteen Van Buren Street, Jamestown, to be appointed a member of the Board of Assessment Review in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. And the term for which said appointment is to be made will expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll rule it, that's what.
I'm sorry.
That's it. Do you have a motion to suspend the rules and vote on the appointments?
Set.
By Councilman Von Figlio. Clerk, please pull the council on the suspension of the rules.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
Aye. Do you have a motion to approve the appointments?
So move.
So move by Councilman Russell. Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
Before we go on, I think there's no sound on the live stream. Can we check to make sure it's clear? Dear councilmembers, at the end of May twenty twenty-five, the city of Jamestown welcomed one new employee to its ranks. Haley Lordman joined the assessor's office. Additionally, we bid farewell to two dedicated public servants upon their retirement. Detective Greg Wozniak of the City of Jamestown Police Department retired after many years of committed service. We also extend our gratitude to Larry Scalise, Jamestown's building and zoning co-reformment officer, who retired from his role within the Department of Development. I kindly request that we acknowledge and extend a warm welcome to our new hire while also celebrating and commending our retirees for their exemplary service to the city of Jamestown and its constituents during the upcoming June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Very truly yours, Kimberly A. Eckler.
We will correct that, it's Detective Lieutenant, just out of respect for his rank.
Very good. Anything else? At this time, we give opportunities for people to address the councils. If anyone here would like to address the council, please step up to one of the mics. Please give us your name and address and manage your remarks for five minutes. Does anyone here would like to address the council? See.
Good evening. Paul Wolf, two-twelve Fulton Street. It's been a couple of weeks since I came and asked about it. And he came to my door, and I was just curious, Mr. President, have you contacted the Parks Department about that brush on the sidewalk?
Yes, they have.
All right, thank you. So that was what I would hear. I'd also like to ask a question, because my wife asked me a question, and I didn't know the answer. The stairs that go from in front of the houses, from the street to the sidewalk, is that a public easement that the city is responsible for maintaining, or is that the property owners? I know the sidewalk is, you know, a property owner.
From the street to the sidewalk?
Yeah, from like between the sidewalk and the curb, those stairways that go up on the streets that have hills.
Chairs?
It would be treated the same as the sidewalk, where it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain.
Okay. Some of those condemned properties with the brush over them, they're really bad as far as that goes. If there's no owner, who would be responsible for those ones? Because those are really bad, too. Just thought I'd point that out, because, and it's in a lot of other neighborhoods, too. And I'm not, I feel bad, because I only bring up my neighborhood, you know, but that's where I live. But I do walk around a lot, and it is in a lot of neighborhoods where it's like that. So if everyone on the council could maybe, you know, take a look around the city in some of the quieter neighborhoods, you know, some things are pretty bad as far as the maintenance goes. We'd really appreciate it.
I just want to, I did speak with the director of the Parks Department.
Oh, sorry.
And they're supposed to be sending a crew up to take a look at that and clear that out. I know they're getting ready for some demolitions up there, and there's some roadwork going on as well.
Yeah, there's the gas line thing.
Yes, yes, work and stuff. And I did take photos of some of the sidewalks, too, they're in four.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
PWA, so.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Scott Axson, four hundred and two Park Street. Just want to bring to the attention of the city and the council that Scandinavian Folk Festival is less than three weeks away at the Ice Arena. Just got off a meeting there tonight on the find all the things we're doing. I know the mayor's gonna be involved a little bit at the opening. It's the nineteenth and twentieth of July, and we'll have some things going on in the street the whole weekend at the arena. So I'll leave a couple of brochures, but that's not really the reason I came tonight. On Saturday, the Warren Observer newspaper, the editor wrote an article about e-bikes require state and local action. Now, I read that yesterday morning, and because I work all around the city, I drive forty miles a week in the city, probably another twenty miles with the lake, doing pool work. So yesterday morning, I'm driving a little after nine o'clock, going down Forest. I get to Newland, and this motorcycle, a young rider, very small, pulls out in front of me. I have to right away, I had to stop in the intersection not to hit the motorcycle. It looked like it was a kid driving it. They continued down to Washington, and they blew through the stop sign or the red light and continued to go towards Hookland Square. I bring that up only because unsafe. Then today, I was going over to the North Side, and over by Arden Parkway, a kid comes on an e-bike, shoots across all the traffic at four thirty, when it's a heavy time. Doesn't even care, and shoots over to where the convenience store is across the street, in the other side of the street. What really irritated me tonight was I'm driving from the Ice Arena at seven o'clock to go back and check out pool over on the North Side, and a person comes on an e-bike down Washington Street and blows through the light of Washington and Third, and just continues through when there's traffic that has to stop for them. The e-bike eastbound situation is out of control. I'm in the city driving around all the time. I am so worried to hit somebody, because it's my liability, but we're doing nothing to try to work and see how to make changes to make these riders understand the right of ways, because a lot of these e-bikes now are going as fast as motorcycles, three miles an hour, city speed limit. So I just want to say that it's gonna take someone to get killed before someone finally maybe looks at the real problem. Because you've got people out there without helmets. You've got people out there that don't even care about the laws. You've got people going the wrong way on the streets. You've got people on the sidewalks that should go in the wrong way that shouldn't even be on the sidewalks. But I've had three incidents in the last three, six hours that really concerns me that now that we're in the summer, people are not paying attention, but it's the drivers who are gonna suffer from it. And I just ask that there be more attention paid to some of this, because it makes me not want even to drive around the city, but I have to. So I bring that up only because I just don't want to see someone hurt. So I just, I've asked the editor of the Post Journal to run the show up, or they ran a warrant, Brian Dunker, but we need to bring it to a higher level, because those type of vehicles are like motorcycles, but they're not treating it like they're anything but a bicycle, and they don't care. So thank you, and I'll leave these on the bench.
I'll just mention real quick that we do have a Safe Streets For All grant. So this is definitely something that we will look at as we start to proceed. We have contracted with our consultants, and we will be doing a pickup in August. But absolutely top priority for this contract going forward. So it's the Safe Streets For All Road Action Plan Grant that we have.
Thank you, I gotta go back to work, so. Thank you for all these.
Thanks, guys.
It's the season, right, with the fools?
Yes, it is.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Doug Jam, two-two-five Bullard Street. I just want to reaffirm what Scott just said. On the North Side, where I look close to Buffalo Street, the acceleration is tremendous beyond the speed limit. Every night, somebody goes down with an e-bike without a helmet, through the intersection, don't care. So that is a rampant problem in the city, and yes, something needs to be done about it. But I'm also here tonight to ask the chief of police a question, because last year, we had a nuisance officer, and on Friday will be the fourth of July. So reports will be in the air regarding fireworks. And I've been asked by my neighbors as to whether or not there's gonna be some beefed-up parolees that will react to that accordingly. I know every officer is a nuisance officer, however. Last year, after the fourth was over with, the mayor was not happy with what happened. So I'm just wondering what we can do about it this year. And consequently, I raise this because I've seen nothing regarding it. So I think there ought to be some type of message sent by the police department and the city council regarding the use of unauthorized fireworks, which apparently are in the community all the time. I get them now before, you all will get the calls, I'm sure. So I guess I'd like to know what the process is gonna be for Friday night. Is it gonna be extra people on board, or is there gonna be the standard shift work reacting to all the necessary calls that will be coming in to the police department? Thank you.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a press release that was given out to the media on Friday, correct? And it was quite lengthy, explaining the use of illegal fireworks and what will be done. And if you want to answer any other part of that question.
Yeah, we're looking at manpower for Friday. We haven't determined whether or not we're going to put out more patrols for that. We'll make a determination within the next couple of days.
Thank you. You can enter that one out on Friday.
That's Friday.
That was Friday. One other question, back to the e-bikes, maybe a later, we can answer it. They have the same rules or laws as a regular bicyclist, or is there differences to them? Do you know?
Chief and I were discussing that. You know, obviously, unlicensed motorized vehicles on the roadway are illegal. Bicycles, though, are not.
It depends on the motor itself, the size, the capability, the speed, what they can do. It gets very specific.
I know, it's a problem, and the same as with the cyclists, but they have to follow the rules of the road, just like a regular bicyclist or a motorcyclist would have to follow it. Are they required to wear a helmet on an e-bike?
Under eighteen.
Under eighteen. Right.
It is a problem.
Yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, same one, let's move on. Do we have any presentation petitions or presentations? We have reports from our standing committees. We'll start with the Finance Committee, and the first eight resolutions will be sponsored by the chairman of the Finance Committee, Councilman Sheldon.
Mr. President.
I have a resolution authorizing a painful regular orbit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution supporting the submission of a consolidated funding application, CFA, for the pro housing supply.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual action plan, including specific CPG and home activities to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, contingent on any additional public comment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution supporting the submission of a consolidated funding application, CFA, submission for the Strategic Planning and Fatality Studies Program.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a lease agreement for space at the Craig Park Park for the purposes of kayak rental through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-sixth, subject to the approval of the City Parks Department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to participate in a strive for the period of March first, twenty twenty-five, through March third, twenty twenty-sixth, with the funding in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and no cents, provided by the state of New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the hiring of four full-time firefighters to fill current vacancy to within the Jamestown Fire Department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
And finally, I have a resolution authorizing four recruited firefighters to attend the New York City Office of Fire Protection Control Recruited Firefighter Training Program of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, through October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with fees and expenses paid for seven to seven seventy V of the General Municipal Laws of the State of New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have one for the chief. Is it the same four that will be going to the academy, or are there four in addition to?
No, the same four.
So, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
The next seven resolutions out of finance will be sponsored by Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution accepting the grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Junior Legacy Fund for design and access administered by the Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and no cents to be designated for support of Bergen Park Disc Golf.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a note there, the Jamestown City Council hereby extends its appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the citizens of the city of Jamestown to the Ralph C. Wilson Junior Legacy Fund and Community Foundation for Greater Buffalo for their generous donation.
Thank you. Want to make any other comments?
If you haven't played disc golf, go play it.
It's a growing sport.
Any other questions, council? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Arpatty Concrete Excavating for Street Reconstruction, twenty twenty-five, Barrow Street, for a total bid amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and no cents. For estimate, project funded through GIPS.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
Thank you. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Arpatty Concrete Excavating LLC for Strong Street Total Reconstruction, twenty twenty-five, Prendergast Avenue to Lakeview Avenue for a total bid amount of forty thousand, five hundred, eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and this is also funded through GIPS.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Arpatty Concrete Excavating LLC for the Allen Park Banshell Stairs Project, twenty twenty-five, for a total bid amount of one hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars and no cents, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
We did determine that was the cheapest bid, obviously.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
Thank you. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with Jamestown Roofing Incorporated for City Hall Select Roof Repairs for a total increase in the amount of eighty thousand dollars and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
Thank you. I have a resolution authorizing lieutenants Adam McKinley and Josh Nickerson to attend the FBI Great Lakes Leadership Seminar to be held at the Regional Command College in Niagara Falls, New York from September twenty-first through September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, with lodging, meals, and gas expenses paid by the Jamestown Police Department pursuant to Section seventy-seven V of the General Municipal Laws of the State of New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
Thank you. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the transfer of documents via eminent domain for two small sections of sidewalk on the northeast and southwest corners of the intersection of Fourth Street and Prendergast Avenue for the purpose of installing new curving and liposkin amount of four hundred and twenty dollars and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
That concludes our resolutions out of finance. We do have two resolutions under public safety. The first one will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Local Law Number Two of twenty twenty-five, Establishment of Local Government Code Enforcement Program.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council. Oh, this is the table, okay, I'm sorry. This is table. I'm getting rid of myself. Next month we go around. Local laws are tabled for one month, but we take it to the July voting session. Our second resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one new one-hundred-and-fifty-watt equivalent LED L2-501-75W on BPU pole three zero one eight five, located on Meadow Lane. I believe it's the legislative end.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
Thank you. That concludes our prefiled resolutions. Do we have any reports of special committees? Reports of city officers? Do we have any reports from councilmen on administrative boards? Is there any unfinished business? Seen any? We do have a couple of resolutions under new business, and the first resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Deversa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolve that the mayor be and she hereby is authorized to enter into certain temporary easement agreement with the grant or set easement to be subject to approval as to form by the Office of Corporation Council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, and President Dole.
Our final resolution under new business will be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas the Allen Park Women's Club has gifted the city of Jamestown twenty thousand dollars and no cents for the purpose of replacing stairs at the Allen Park Banshell, whereas the Stalker Regent's Foundation has gifted the city of Jamestown eighteen thousand dollars and no cents for the purpose of replacing the stairs of the Allen Park Banshell, resolve that the city of Jamestown hereby accepts the donations and be further rewalled, that the Jamestown City Council hereby sends its appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the citizens of the city of Jamestown, to the Stalker Regent's Foundation and the Allen Park Women's Club for their generous donations.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon, Crackman, Heather Nede, Reynolds, Faulkner, Von Figlio, Deversa, Russell, President Dole.
That concludes our resolutions under new business. Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I received a call last week from the resident over by the, I guess it's Old Rogers School on camp there in Heather, and apparently there was a fawn under a tree, and it was deceased. It was only like a month old. And so I had gone up there, I called Dan Stone, but the problem was that people who were, someone in the school system took it on their own. I think their intent was good, but common sense wasn't there. And brought the fawn in and put cold water on it and it proceeded to die. And they brought it back and put it under the tree. And there was kids playing soccer there and everything, so Dan and I had to remove the fawn. It was probably a month old. And it was, it wasn't pretty. But I just remind people, there's professionals that can take care of stuff like that, and do not, let nature take its course, is all I'm saying. The mother was looking for it a couple of hours after that, because the mother put it there, and split up the other fawn, and obviously it was gone. So use some common sense and call someone that knows what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Permission to address the council on the forebench of the Senate?
Excuse me, Anna.
Permission to address the council on this matter?
Yeah, no problem. Okay, yeah.
My name is Robin Brown. I'm the Director of Alternative and Special Education with ERTU BOCES. ERTU BOCES was made aware of concerns regarding a fawn at our Bloom program at Rogers Elementary Site, a location leased to our BOCES by Jamestown Public Schools. The situation is delicate in nature and is being addressed with the utmost respect and care for our students and the surrounding Jamestown community. Every year, local wildlife, including deer, frequently make their way onto-